...of the zoning board of adjustment of the city of Elizabeth without coming to order. This meeting with the zoning board of adjustment of the city of Elizabeth can be started Thursday, 12th day of April 2012, as the duly announced in the 40th amendments of the open colored meeting plan. As the regular meeting, notice of said meeting was published in the Star Ledger on January 27th, 2012, and the notices of cases to be heard were also published in the Star Ledger at this 10 days before Friday. Madam Secretary, your open call.
Commissioner Taubach?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez? Commissioner Castro? Commissioner Jackson? Commissioner Zilla?
Here.
Commissioner Dean? Commissioner DeTallis?
Here.
Eric Dixon? Commissioner Tomlin?
Here.
Commissioner Galvin?
Here.
Chairman Dennis?
Here.
Well, would you please rise and give a brief I call the digits, this is the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic for its stands, one nation of God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. First matter for the board for the Z will be Z 04-12-200-14, Old North Avenue, activist Elizabeth LLC. Can you just have the gentleman fill in the state of name for the right of place?
Richard Wong.
Ri- Richard Wong. So, you have the most common one. And where can you find this video?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're receiving hail from Hamlet Hale, representative of activist Elizabeth LLC. I had the pleasure of being before this board in 2003. Our office presented an application that had very similar to what's proposed here this evening installed, that at the time we see an installation of an underground ethanol alcohol tank, and that was in fact who provided this board. However, the project was never implemented, and those approvals had expired, so we're back before this board, and I think it will therefore testify that many of the same reasons why we're going to represent the case. In this case, though, we are looking for an above ground tank, and you'll see an explanation as to why the technology has changed, and now these days tanks of this nature are placed above ground. We've had an opportunity, what's proposed there is installation of a 8,000 gallon tank, and also two sheds on the site. This is the former Pure Pack pharmaceutical that again is now active. It's located in the MRC zone. The use itself is permitted, but the above ground storage is the reason that we're here before the board. And we did have an opportunity to review all the departmental comments, including the review letter of our consultants, and comments from fire department, and CCA's partner testimony, and not having any problem complying with any terms of the issues. That's an overview of the application. If there's no preliminary questions, we could move on or reverse words. Thank you. Would I call on John Gosar?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Your focus on the spirit of the testimony, your anything, and no matter what we do, we want to make sure that you have a seat. My name is David. I'm a fellow of the state of New Jersey. Please, 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 please. We just gave you a better than any of your addresses. Okay. Excuse me a second. How many people have been out there?
John Gosar, that's J Y Chen, G O S S A R D. Address is 44 Freeland V R E E L A L D Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. Mr. Gosar, if you could give the board your position with the applicant, how long you've been there, and what your function is?
Okay. My name again, I'm John Gosar, Director of Engineering and activist Elizabeth LLC. We have been at that site, in one form or another, since 1958 as Pure Pack, and as various names since then. We manufacture pharmaceuticals, primarily solid oral dosage, solid oral dosage tablets and capsules.
And explain a little overview of what's at the facility now, and again, the type of operation that occurs there.
Okay. So, to this application for various, we use various solids, ethanol and dehydrated ethanol in the arm processes. So, the purpose of the 8,000 gallon tank is to store some bulk storage in for pure ethanol.
And I indicated in my opening statement that a number of years ago, we had a similar project, is that correct?
Yes.
But that was in the name for an underground tank?
Yes.
This similarly sized, similar purposes?
Similar size, similar purpose, similar process.
And at the present time, you utilize this product. We discussed it. Can you explain to the board how that process occurs now, and what the benefits by having a new tank installed?
Okay. The ethanol is primarily used for a spray solution to granulable coke, a spray, spread of granulable, sorry, or coke pharmaceutical products. And currently, 55 gallon drums of ethanol are distributed throughout the plant, and they are distributed manually via carts, and they are dispensed manually. What this project, the benefit of this project is to eliminate the 55 gallon drum distribution throughout the plant, and convert that to an automated distribution system, which would be through stainless steel pipe from the 8,000 gallon ethanol tank.
And we've indicated that the previous approval that was granted by this board was for an underground tank. What changes have occurred since 2003, that now have you been looking for an above ground tank?
Well, the technology for one has improved. The tank that we're proposing is double wall tank. It is essentially newer design, newer technology. It's utilizing some technology that wasn't available at that time in 2003.
And is it commonplace for this type of product, with these tanks to be above ground?
Yes.
And there's also, as part of the site plan application, two sheds to post. Can you explain the purpose of those?
Well, one shed would be used for the pumping devices to pump the ethanol from the tank through the plant, and the other one would be for empty drums of other products that we always add at all.
And what impact maybe would this have on the number of deliveries to and from the site, and the ease of delivery as opposed to the present situation?
Right now, we utilize about 50,000 gallons of pure ethanol handling, and essentially what we'll have is 8 to 10 deliveries. So, deliveries will be less, since we're delivering all essentially the 8,000 gallon tank.
So, how many deliveries would you anticipate in a year?
From the, for the tank, probably 8 to 10 at this point.
Now, you've read all of the departmental comments and indicated that we won't have any problem complying. Just briefly indicate what type of compliance and safety measures you as a company must take to ensure as a pharmaceutical company you're highly regulated?
Yes. Well, we do comply to all local, state, federal codes. We have nitrogen blanking interim, so these, these tanks will embody ethanol from the tanks inside the building that then are applying to all codes or production curves. And we are in a continuous improvement mode where when we identify that things that might not meet our code, we bring up the standard.
So, from an operational standpoint, this change to the single tank as opposed to the drums provides safety, efficiency, and also ease of operation?
Yes. And just another point, this, this project is not based on return on investment. This is strictly safety compliance. The savings from all 55 gallon drum in terms of the price of alcohol is not significant enough to justify the project on its own merits. It's a safety compliance driven project.
Now, obviously, you're going to have a site plan proposed, but from your standpoint, briefly explain to the board where this is located on the site?
It is located on the north and west corner of the 35,000 from the building.
Fairly centrally located on the site?
It's located on the site, so it would be difficult to see from neighboring buildings, residential or commercial.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Mr. Chairman, you stated these second sheds were for storage of drums? Sorry. You stated that the second shed in one building was for storage of drums?
Yes.
Where are these drums being stored now?
We have a facility inside the building. It's an area that again is, it needs cover, and all we would do with these drums, we would locate empty drums in the building, and put empty drums under the shed for pickup.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gosar. I'd like to have Paul Skinner. Chair. Line, line of engineering, the rest.
This is Paul Skinner, S K I N in E R, which is 33 Hankins Farm Road, H A, 33 Hankins, H A N K I M S Farm Road in Allentown, New Jersey.
And Mr. Skinner, if you could please give the board the benefit of your work, educational experience, and background, any areas of expertise?
I'm a mechanical engineer. I have my bachelor's of science in mechanical engineering from Rutgers University, licensed practice in Jersey, Pennsylvania. I work for a firm called C R B Consulting Engineers. We are a firm that specializes in pharmaceutical manufacturing and such facilities.
Thank you. And Mr. Skinner, you've heard the testimony so far. If you could please provide the board with an overview of the existing conditions at the site, along with what's proposed, the location of the tank on the site plan. You can take the microphone, and perhaps if there's an exhibit we should have more as...
I have two, I have two boards, our recordions, we're going to have, does he have a photo?
I just want to acknowledge Commissioner Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Skinner, if you could mark that board as A1 of today's A1, and describe, indicate to the record, I think you've indicated that is a mounted version of what's submitted with the package, with the exception of the photograph, which is the exact correct?
So, your question, I believe, was an overview of the existing conditions. So, the photo here shows the site, a more out on that side with the existing parking and existing manufacturing building, the employee parking in the back.
Your, 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 your.
Just slow down a little bit, and it'll be easier.
Others can, can, can say anything. Sorry.
A little feedback.
Okay. So, the photo shows the existing building on the site, a more out on that side, employee parking in the back, the existing truck loading docks along the back of the building. The area where we're going to be working is off the back corner of the building, close to where the existing truck loading docks are.
And if you could indicate on that section, on the aerial, and then on the other portions of the site plan, where the tank is going to be located?
The tank is going to be located on the photograph off, off here, the corner of the parking lot, and between the building and the employee parking, as drawn here, on the drawing portion, as John describes central to the, to the site, actually, hard, hard to see unless you've already identified to the, to the This drawing indicates the tank and two sheds that were described earlier.
Now, in the testimony you provided us to date so far, we indicated that there was a previous approval of a similar tank. Can you describe the differences between the 2000, the hearing was in 2002, the approval in 2004?
So, if I can switch to the other exhibit, interesting information on the tank?
We could mark that as A2 of today's A1. And if you could describe what that is?
So, on this exhibit, there's a blown up view, with the same detail that we had on the other exhibit in terms of the tank and shed locations off the corner of the building. Again, this is all just a blown up view, it's already provided on the, this is all blown up detail of what's already provided on the drawings that were submitted. And also for reference on this exhibit, this information about the tank, as John described earlier, referred to as a fire guard tank, specially designed for solid storage.
And the, the tank and the sheds will apply with all applicable codes, regulations, and requirements?
Correct. They're drawn with the appropriate setbacks and property lines. Sheds are just an open storage shed, open on one side, covered for storage, and the other tank is also open on one side, and it's just to house the pumping equipment, as described earlier. The tank, your initial question referred to the difference between the old location and the new one, and the primary difference being of the above ground storage tank, which is this fire guard technology, that's a specially designed tank.
And if there's a testimony of, 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 regarding placing the tank now with the technology above ground, if you could briefly expand on that?
So, the tank is a double wall tank. It includes an insulation layer between the two walls, which provides protection from any external source of heat. It includes leak detection, so that if there's a leak on the inner wall, it would end up into the outer tank, and a sensor would indicate that...
It would end up in the outer tank?
In the outer wall, and there's an inner and outer wall. There's a sensor located, so that if water or liquid does make it to the outer wall, that's indicating, and the alarm goes off, and people know that there's a leak on the inner tank.
And have you had an opportunity to review the departmental comments that Harvard consultants, fire department, have any problem complying with any terms of the business?
No.
I have no further questions at the time. Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. I, I write by, so, some, some of the issues that I'm going to address, they have been covered before my arrival. One is, what, what is the purpose of this tank? Why do you need to have this tank storing ethanol there?
Could we have, Mr. Gosar, repeat your earlier testimony?
Probably, I can wait.
I, I can, we already had the testimony, Mr. Gosar, but the, they already use the product now, but they bring it into drums, and the tank, by having the tank, will have more safety, less deliveries to the site, but it's used to, my turn, I think when they make the pharmaceuticals, pills, it's used in connection with that process.
I understand. The other question is, what are the dimensions of the, of the shed?
There are two sheds, one is 17 feet by 17, and the other one is smaller, 13 by 12 approximately.
And you would be storing there what?
The one, the smaller shed is for, is not for storage, is for permanently installed pumps, which pump the ethanol into the building. The other shed is for storing empty drums.
I have a last question, and I don't know if these witnesses is the one that could probably provide interaction. They're asking for the training, you know, the fire department. Why did they request you to be in that fire department today?
Well, we raised before preliminary final, because I don't think the ready site conditions on the board was spread that we're agreed to comply, or we don't need any variances other than the use variance. I don't think there's any site...
I understand, I understand now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good thinking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner DeTallis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you give me the dimensions of the tank, height, length of origin?
The tank is an 8,000 gallon storage tank. We have an elevation view that shows it, it doesn't call out the dimensions, but it is, I recall it was eight feet, is that correct? Eight feet deep in there?
And also, under the departmental review, the fire department specifically asked us to submit a fire suppression system plan. Do you have any of those plans?
We're going to have members with plans, with what we can, sorry, so, I can do what you're saying.
So, the answer to yes, will generate those plans in cooperation with the, the fire officials?
Okay, but you have, do not yet have those plans?
Correct.
Thank you. Bishop, any questions?
Yes. But if you say that with underground is on above ground, I mean, what is the reason you guys didn't want it on top?
Before you go to the safety of having underground, why put it on top? Above ground is considered an advantage because it allows continuous inspection of the equipment. If there's ever any issue, you're always looking at the tank. It's essential that the technology has changed, where it's more typical to look at the above ground.
Does it make it easier?
I can't say it is easier in one way or the other. It's easier not to dig, digging the underground tank creates certain environmental issues to have it underground, so it's preferred to have it above ground from a safety standpoint. I wouldn't say it's equivalent, it has some advantage in terms of ease of inspection.
One more question. What type of material is going to be made in that tank, 25 degrees of glass, or stainless steel?
Stainless steel.
I have another question. The monitoring of this tank would be solely from the exterior of the building, or would it be monitoring station with this building itself, making something of a...
I'm not sure we completed the monitoring design. The alarm system is visible external to the building. Currently, there's no intention of alarms building to the inside operators, the alarm of the tank to the inside operators.
Should we ask what's under the ground tank's level, or is that the part of the question to be asked?
I can add your question. You're already sworn in, Mr. Gosar. It's our, it's our intention. It's our intention to monitor from inside the building. We have an existing tank, we have an existing tank with existing monitors.
So, this one will be monitored?
Yes.
On the same page, on the P I N I P page, showing this is sheet 101, drawing, drawing number P B 600, that's the last page in the sheet in section. It shows the existing underground storage shed. That storage shed, now, and in relation to the ethanol tank, is a completely different tank?
Yeah, it's completely different tank. We use dehydrated ethanol, which is in the underground storage shed, and we intend to use this net of pure ethanol.
Mr. Chairman, please, I'm the same, now, with someone on the monitor, other tanks, other equipment, you have a facility 24 hours a day, 7 days a week?
We have a 24/7 facility with 24/7 security.
Okay, so, if this alarm should go off at 2:00 in the morning, with somebody on site, to be able to respond to it, make the necessary protocols, or take necessary action?
Yes.
Thank you. My final, this is Paul Skinner, our professional planner. Mr. Skinner, I know you testified, because I want to, you testified before this board, because you were qualified as an expert in the first application, but since many of the members have changed, if you could please give the board briefly the benefit of your work, educational experience, any areas of expertise, obviously you have this part of the board.
Yes, so I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I have been since 1999. I'm a principal of Phillips Price Private Planning and Real Estate Consultants, and I have been qualified as an expert before this board, the Elizabeth Planning Board, and for 100 other boards throughout New Jersey, as an expert in planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Describe the... It's frightening, I've heard the testimony, it's this evening, and from a planning standpoint, if you could please give your findings to the board?
Sure. The subject property is over six acres in area. It's somewhat unique in Elizabeth that it has an industrial concern that has been operating since nineteen fifty-eight. It fits in well with the surrounding area, which has a mix of land uses. There's commercial nearby, some other industrial, and some residential as well. But generally speaking, it's an established use. And the applicant is simply seeking to make some very minor modifications to help ensure that the use can remain in place, can remain an active contributor to Elizabeth's economy. With regard to the reason before this board, the M R C zone in which the property is located, does permit light manufacturing, including of pharmaceuticals. But the tank that is proposed has been determined not to be explicitly permitted, which allows you to retire your use variance for that tank. But I believe the use variance that's being proposed can be raised in other applicable courts here. First of all, address the positive criteria. With regard to the site, it is particularly suited due to its physical and locational characteristics. In particular, for the proposed storage tank. The site, as I mentioned, has been a manufacturing facility for a number of years. And this use provides significant benefits to Elizabeth through taxes and jobs. But also, it contributes against the character of this area in terms of being a mix of non-residential uses. In that context, the addition of a tank, it's eight feet diameter and setback nearly two hundred feet from West Branch Street would not have any impacts. It would not change the nature of the area. In other words, it's a real minor modification on a rather large site. It also, as mentioned, would make the use more efficient in terms of operations, would actually reduce the amount of deliveries that are necessary, and improve safety by eliminating the use of fifty-five gallon drums throughout the site. So for those reasons, I think two purposes of the municipal land use law would be addressed. The first is purpose A, both the general health, safety, and welfare, both because of the safety improvements that would be made possible through the addition of the tank, and also because of the site's suitability for, in addition to the existing industrial use. Also, purpose G of the land use law, to ensure that, that is, there are sufficient spaces, appropriate locations for industrial, commercial, and other types of uses. Again, the zone is intended for manufacturing, for commercial, and other types of similar uses. With regard to the second aspect of the use variance, the negative criteria, I believe there'd be no substantial detriment to the public good. As I mentioned, the site is quite large, it's had manufactured for some time. And the change that's proposed as part of this use variance would be minimal on the site. We're talking again, a couple hundred feet away from the nearest street. And essentially not visible from the neighboring properties anymore so than trucks or other vehicles or, or sheds, other types of things on the site. So again, it's not a large building, it's not an imposing presence that's being proposed. So I think there'd be no substantial visual impacts on neighboring properties. There would actually be improvements in terms of deliveries and reduction, ever so slightly in terms of traffic to the site for delivering the drums of, that are currently utilized. Also, the app has indicated that it will follow all necessary safety regulations and for the tank, and will be a safety yard for the tank itself. With regard to the second aspect of the criteria, if you know some substantial detriment to the zone and zoning ordinance of Elizabeth for a few reasons. First, manufacturing is generally permitted in the M R C zone. Again, the tank is, it's a technical variance of the building, it's part of the operation, it's necessary, and it would enhance the viability of this use. I think that makes it consistent with the city's master plan, by promoting the economic base, by maintaining the viability of existing industrial business. That again, provides jobs and economic benefits to Elizabeth. It also would not be out of character with the established character of the area. So in sum, I think there's clearly no substantial impairment to either the zoning plan or the master plan of the city from this installation.
Thank you, Mr. Rigel. I have no further questions at this time. Thank you. We have no further witnesses for this presentation.
Are there any members of the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, will you step forward with the time and statement and ask us?
Mr. Chairman. I think this is a very simple application. Few years ago, the same applicant obtained an approval to construct the same eight thousand gallon tank, above ground storage stand. I, I really don't see any problem supporting this application, so I just wanted to voice my opinion regarding that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really also have a problem with this application. What is troubling me right now is this fire suppression system plan. I would like to see this plan submitted as soon as possible to both the fire department and Harvard Consultants. Possibly even a stipulation to the final approval. So other than that, the facility is monitoring twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Should something happen, there should be, will be someone on site to handle it appropriately. So again, if you're subject to fire suppression system, I'm also in favor of this application.
Mr. Chairman, my bad. This is zoning issue, years ago, they were reporting on the board as an underground tank. Today, they're reporting on the board as a above ground tank. I believe the use is the same. I think the biggest issue that we will probably have is more of a safety. But they have plenty of experience, they know what they need to do, it's state regulated. I'm more than convinced that the safety can be there for the people who need it.
Yes, since this project was approved years ago, I don't think it's why you're having any problem with it. Mr. Chairman, I move in motion to approve this application for the preliminary and final report. With one condition, that the issues that were brought to the attention of the board by Commissioner Capa are dealt with in a preliminary way. And that is the fire suppression system, which is important to ensure the safety of these tanks.
Commissioner, for your reasons, you walked in late. I did not hear all the testimony, you're going, you can't vote on the application, but you can certainly make the motion and your comments are welcome.
I, if you don't mind me to vote on the application, I don't have a problem with that, even though I respectfully disagree with you. I think I, I heard a substantial amount of the testimony of the witness. But if your position is that I shouldn't, then I would not vote.
Okay. Could I add to that, I think that we did hear the testimony that they are going to submit that suppression system. So I think it's a fracture.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Paul. I have a second, Chairman.
Hi, Chairman, Commissioner Capa.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Abstain.
Commissioner Silva. Commissioner E. Commissioner Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Conlon. Aye. Commissioner Galvez.
Aye.
Chairman Rivas.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Senator, for the fact that you can forward it.